Are we ready? Okay. Good evening, everybody. We're at a special meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission of Darien, Connecticut. Tonight is Tuesday, March 19th, 2019. We're in the Mathers Center Cafe Extension here at Town Hall. And it's about 8:03. So we're going to start this evening with a general meeting. I think there's about one, five, five items which should go rather quickly. And then we're going to open it up to a public hearing. So the first items are deliberation, possible decisions regarding the following. Flood damage prevention application number 391, Tanah Darien, Pear Tree Point Beach, 139 Pear Tree Point Road. Proposal to replace an existing security gatehouse with a new six-by-nine-foot gatehouse a few feet from its existing location and perform related site development activities with a regulated area. This is a resolution we reviewed last-
Great resolution, your packets. You may recall, the public hearing on this on March 12th was quite straightforward. The hearing was last week. Last two and five minutes. It's basically a new security hut about five feet, five to seven feet back from the existing one. So just straightforward.
And the key thing was it's going to be removed seasonally if I remember correctly.
Correct.
I didn't find anything on there. Did the two other members that were at the meeting?
No.
Unless any of you caught up?
I read the file and I was watching the hearing on television.
Okay. So you can wait in. Do you got anything else?
Now the resolution looks clean to me.
All right. So with that in mind, could I get a motion to approve as submitted?
Motion to approve as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Landfilling and regrading application number 189A. David, I'm sorry, I'm going to mess this up. Geolia, 86 Nearwater Lane. Proposal to regrade the rear yard of property, install a replacement stormwater retention system, and perform related site development activities. And I think this one also pretty straightforward. It was, I guess, a malfunctioning, already malfunctioning stormwater retention system that was leaking. The neighbor came up and asked for a few questions about it. I think it's going to be improvement. We had expert testimony that agreed with that assessment.
Correct. Wayne Devanto, the engineer, was present on behalf of the applicant, who explained that the proposal is to remedy the drainage problem by putting in brand-new Coltechs right behind the house and having some associated regrading to minimize the drainage problems which are there now.
Again, well-written resolution, I found. Anybody else have any comments?
No.
Okay. So I'd love to entertain a motion to approve as submitted as well.
Motion to approve as submitted.
Second.
All in favor? Thanks, guys. Landfilling and regrading application number 449, Brin Harder, 38 Christie Hill Road. Proposal to regrade the property to create a level rear yard with associated retaining walls, install a new stormwater management system, and perform related site development activities. If I remember, again, pretty straightforward. One of the questions was the distance between the two homes. A couple of us were looking at Google Maps and satellite view, but I think we, staff was able to contend or confirm that there's adequate space between the yards and the regrading's not going to impact the neighboring property. Did I miss anything?
Nope, that's it.
All right. Anybody else have any comments?
Not me.
All right. So again, I'd entertain a motion to approve as submitted.
Motion to approve.
Ms. Rand?
As submitted.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor? Great. And the approval of minutes would pretty much, almost winds up the general meeting. That's March 12th, 2019. I went through them. I didn't see anything that stuck out at me. Pretty quick meeting, pretty easy meeting. Anybody else have anything?
We have no comments. Minutes.
I'm getting abstained since I wasn't at the meeting.
Okay. Okay. So it's going to be the three of us?
Yeah.
So they have a motion to approve it. Minutes as submitted. Ms. Rand?
Second in.
Ms. Reba? All in favor?
Yes.
Three, zero, two. All right. And then discussion of proposed Appendix F of the zoning regulations. Chart of use in bulk standards. The Ovani charts will call this.
That looks really nice.
It does, doesn't it? Okay.
I think you spiffed it up a little bit.
Who's presenting this to us?
So we prepared these tables, tables of bulk and dimensional standards for all the commercial office and residential zones in the town. No new information is being presented in this table. It's essentially a summary of all the uses permitted, either as of right or by special permit, and then all the bulk and dimensional standards associated with those particular uses.
So zoning for dummies, basically? Is that the way to put it?
It makes it easy just to pull out a chart, quickly reference the uses permitted in that zone.
Show and tell?
There you go. Of course, the commercial element of these bulk tables is, of course, dependent on the commission's decision regarding the business zone amendments, which we'll be hearing about tonight.
So these are reflecting all the new proposals?
Yes, from the, from the commercial standpoint, yes. Commercial and office standpoint.
So how would we adopt this into, I guess we're going to go through our next two, or yeah, next two public hearing items. Would we adopt this as part of those, or how do you want the process to go?
I think what we'll do is wait and see what happens with the regulation map amendments. The hearing tonight, maybe there's a subsequent hearing, deliberation session with the commission, and then final adoption. And then what this chart will do is we will change it to reflect whatever the commission adopts, if anything. And we'll include it as an Appendix F in the regulations, but it's not, as Fred said, it's not new information. So at this point, we're not of the belief that the commission needs to even vote on it or adopt it formally because basically it's just duplicating the information that's in the regulations, just in a different way. And it's an appendix of the regulations, not necessarily, not necessarily the regulations themselves.
Okay. I agree with that. If you could just present the final copy after we go through the public hearing process and, okay.
You'll see another version of this.
Perfect.
Once we, once the commission votes, but at least this gives you a flavor for the thought process. And if there's changes in design or format, we can work on that over time.
Mr. Ovani, you'll be all over that.
The one thing I would come out, I typically see it as the different districts have a different appendix. So like business would be F, commercial would be A, B, C, and G, H, as in that all in one. If it's on a webpage, you click on it, then it shoots out. So you're not, you just rename it.
Okay. Is, do we have enough letters in the alphabet to do appendixes? No. I'm not really, it was a serious question, actually. I didn't know if this will, these are additional appendices, I guess.
No, so like the business would be F.
I like, I like the idea.
Office would be A, B, C, E, F, G, H, and I.
Good. Got it.
So you just click on one and it spits it, and it spits it out.
Cool. I agree. That's good practice in nature.
So I think we're approving the form of the document, not the content.
But not the content.
At this point.
And it's not even-
You don't, you don't need to approve a formal approval.
It's more something that we're working on in the background, which will eventually reflect whatever, if anything, the commission does, regulation and map changes.
All right.
Good job.
Thank you, yeah. Great, great suggestion, Steve, too. There's a Cunningham, what's the other?
Cunningham chart.
Cunningham chart, and there's an Ovani chart.
That's going to sunset, though. It's only forever.
All right. So now the public hearing. So amendment to Darien zoning regulations, COZR number 1, 2019, and the Darien zoning map number, COZM number 1-2019, put forth by this commission, Darien Planning and Zoning Commission. Proposal to comprehensively amend, reorganize, and renumber the town's business and office zone regulations consistent with the 2016 Town Plan of Conservation and Development. Article 6 Business Zone Regulations is proposed to be moved by, be moved to a new Article 7 Business and Office Zone Regulations, previously Office Zone Regulations, beginning at Section 720. These modifications include, but are not limited to, the following. So do you want me to cover, we'll go one by one, and I'll just announce it, and then we'll go through that section, or you want me to read the whole thing?
I would say read them all, and then Plan, Charter, Plan Amendments can kind of go through them in order and talk about them.
Would you? That would be awesome. Kevin is not here, and I can gather my thoughts before we go. Thank you.
So we have 12 points under the amendments to the Darien zoning regulations. Number one, address the existing convenience food service issue by creating new restaurant categories, which will not limit or restrict indoor seating. Number two, combining certain business zones within the community. A, combining the SB and SVE zones into one, into the service business zone. B, combining the OB, the DOR 1, and DOR 5 zones into a newly created designed office zone, DO. C would be combining the DB 1 and the DB 2 zones into a newly created designed business zone. Three, amendments to the municipal use zone, modify Section 420. These revisions are intended to clarify the nature of the MZ zone as an overlay zone. Number four is to allow restaurants by special permit in the three neighborhood business zones. Number five is allowing personal service uses by right in the DZ zone, Goodwives and Leroy slash West. Number six is to modify the parking requirements and add new parking requirements for certain categories, which would modify Sections 904, 906, 908, and 944. Number seven is to delete certain parking requirements, such as for hotel motel or inn and for dinner theater, and have parking requirements reflect new categories of food service. Reliter Section 904 to group similar uses together. Number eight is to delete the regulations definition in Section 1055, which allow for hotel or motel associated. And that change is the deletion of the parking requirement in Section 904. Number nine is to greatly expanding uses within Darien's office zones, allowing three-story buildings in the newly created office zone, reducing the number of office zones from three down to one. Number 10, clarifying drive-throughs. What zones should allow drive-through restaurants, and which zones should allow drive-through or drive-up banks? Number 11, to clarify which zones will specifically allow parking structures. Number 12, to amend Section 1112.5, referrals, to change reference from Regional Planning Agency to Western Connecticut Council of Governments, WestCOG. The full text of the proposed zoning regulation amendments and zoning map amendments are on file and available in the town clerk's office, in the planning and zoning office for inspection, and also online at www.darienct.gov/pzC.
Our website. Thank you very much. Well done. You're going to take Kevin's role very quickly. So before Glenn gets started, I just wanted to make a quick comment that this process actually began as we started drafting the Plan of Conservation and Development, Town Plan of Conservation and Development. When did we start that process?
2014, 2015.
Yeah, 2014, 2015. And one of the takeaways from that whole process when we adopted it in 2016, but when was that? Do you remember which month? Seems so long ago.
October?
Okay. Late, late 2016 was that we set goals in the plan, and we wanted to achieve some of these goals. And Glenn's been along us, along with us throughout the drafting of the town plan and also implementation of some of the goals. I think one of the most important lines, and I'm going to be a little redundant, is the most important step of the planning process is implementation of plan strategies, policies, and action steps. And so this was one of the key action steps that Ms. Cameron kind of first initiated when she was chair, and we followed up as a commission, and the commission members, of course, have changed over, over that time. So I'll leave that comment with Glenn. Please, the floor is yours, sir.
Chairman, we have, is that the handout? Yeah, we're going to hand out to everyone. It's, I think the commission members have this handout? Or not?
No, I need a copy. I don't think it was, you didn't get one, right?
No.
We can share if you're sure.
Is it in the back of the page?
I didn't see it.
And then we'll distribute them to the audience as well.
Okay.
Okay, great. But basically Glenn's going to show the handout on, on the screen as well and run through a lot of the topics.
Customer.
I'll just share it.
And then, as required by statute, when Glenn's done with his presentation, I have to read aloud the comments we received from the state DEP and the Western Connecticut Council.
Okay.
Oh, the microphone. Nice one.
Ready to go.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. It is hard to believe that we started working together approximately five years ago on elements of the Plan of Conservation and Development, which is the strategic vision for the community. And that led us to look at the business zoning districts in Darien, to recognize that since many of those zones had first been established, the roads had changed a little bit, and it was appropriate to take a moment to look at the zones and make some changes, if you will, to the regulations. So there are a lot of changes that are going on. Our goal in the regulations is to update them and make them as user-friendly as possible. The handout that's been given out to the audience tonight, to the commission summarizes sort of the main categories of what we're accomplishing here. The first one is to modify some of the zoning districts. The major changes were to turn the Narroton Heights area from an overlay zone, which allowed for village development, to a specific zone that now essentially requires village-type development in that area. To combine the service business districts, we had two of them in town with slightly different provisions, the design business, DB 1, DB 2, and also the office districts that had slightly different distinctions between them. And so that these areas can compete on an even footing and meet the needs of the community, those zones were established. So that's the blue category on the handout. And, yeah, orange, anybody, colored?
Whatever you like.
Peach.
Peach.
Peach, thank you. There we go.
That was from there. I was just repeating it.
Was to simplify our regulatory approach to food-related uses. The distinctions that we had in the current regulations were somewhat different between the different zoning districts, so we established definitions for quick-service restaurants, full-service restaurants, retail food establishments, and accessory food service, to provide a level playing field, if you will, for that, and also to allow for restaurants in the neighborhood business district. In the blue, student green category box, we've made some changes here in the different zoning districts. For example, allowing office and personal service uses in the design commercial district, which is Goodwives Shopping Center, to delete certain requirements for hotel motel or inn, expand the uses within the office zones, such as allowing medical clinics, for example. As Jeremy indicated, the reading, if you will, of the notice for this, clarify what zones allow for drive-through restaurants, drive-through banks, et cetera, and clarify which zones will specifically allow parking structures. So there have been some use changes in the various districts. Last major category is to modify the parking requirements. This is to reflect the parking demand for different types of uses, and since we changed the restaurant categories, to add in the standards for what we think would be appropriate there. So those are the major elements, if you will, for the change overall. The application that came before the commission includes changes to the zoning map. Those are reflected here in front of you. And again, there was the service business in the service business east, those have been combined, the DB 1, the DB 2 have been combined, and the office districts have all been combined into design office, and that is part of this application here tonight. Just to walk you through some major elements, this is the actual application material that the commission has before you. I'm not going to read every single page. We need to convert it to, I mean, these pages as part of the discussion tonight, if we can. This is changes to the definitions related to accessory food service, medical clinics, restaurants, of different categories, talked about, et cetera. Municipal use overlay is something we're dealing with in a different page, if I figure.
That's true. We're dealing with the text tonight, but the question of whether to add other properties to the municipal use overlay zone, that hearing's likely April 9th.
So for the municipal use overlay zone, this is a tax change that clarifies that it is an overlay zone, so it applies in addition to the underlying zoning district, and it's essentially just for municipal properties. I think the main issue that came up recently was the public works facility, but it could also be use on other municipal properties as well, and provide some flexibility for municipal uses because they are public facilities. The main change, if you will, in the business zoning regulations, we have renumbered the zoning provisions. Currently, at the present time, Section 600 of your regulations basically contains the different business zoning districts. We have reorganized them and moved them to Section 700. The main reason being we changed the numbers, that there will be no confusion on staff or record or any letters of approval the commission might write in the future. Somebody comes in and says, "Well, I think my regs in compliance with Section 610," you say 610 is no longer in effect. So it avoids confusion during this time period, and we had available numbering systems to do. So the page in the package identifies how these zoning districts are being renumbered. We tried to create some logic and order to the numbering system. The CBD zone is our, is our major zone, that's the first one, then Narroton Heights, and then it starts to go down, and at the end we have the office districts themselves. A number of changes in the different office districts overall, but in the central business district, there's applications the commission has been processing, no major changes here. The regulation's simply better be codified, if you will, in the numbering sequence for the CBD zone. The same situation applies for the northern suburb area. So again, we tried to keep up with what the commission's been doing here, made changes, incorporated the new restaurant definitions and standards in here. But overall, I would say no major changes in the CBD district. Is that fair?
And just quick, a lot of them are clarifications. For example, parking structures, are they allowed?
Correct.
By special permit and in which zones? Same with the drive-throughs. So a lot of these are clear, make them clearer to the general public and to applicants. So that would be the changes in CBD zones, to clarify those.
And the food, and the restaurant.
In the restaurant.
Full service, quick service, retail food, et cetera.
Right.
Again, as I mentioned earlier, the Narroton Heights district, this is page 25 of your package, is now replacing what was, or is today, the design commercial with the Narroton Heights overlay will all be replaced with the new Narroton Heights district. Again, because applications have been in process in this situation, no significant changes overall in the zoning standards, except to make it a grounded zone. The issue again of parking structures, the issue of restaurant definitions have all been incorporated in here, but the dimensional standards and other materials have essentially stayed the same.
You're on page 30?
Yep. The next, the service business zone, this is the situation today in the current zoning map, we have service business and service business east, and there were distinctions between those two. So we have blended here the permitted uses in the district and dimensional standards to provide similar approaches between these two districts overall, and so, and again, address the issue of drive-throughs and also the issue of restaurants, food service, et The design business zone is very similar to design district, or design business zones are on Route 1 post-rub, and essentially distinctions between those two. We have all the properties that are adjacent to each other, the things you could do in one that you couldn't do in the other. And so we blended those requirements and the permitted principal uses together in this, and addressed the issue again of restaurants and drive-throughs.
And when you say address the issues, just be clear that they were already existing standards in the regs, right? So just, these are clarifications?
Clarifications is what I would say. Design commercial district is an existing zoning district. This is on page 42. There's, at the present time, there's three design commercial districts in town. We have Goodwives Shopping Center, we have the Coons Lot. At the present time, underlying Narroton Heights is a design commercial district. With the rezones in Narroton Heights here, essentially the two design commercial districts will be here. The shopping center designation has been changed to allow for office and service uses in the district, which had not been allowed there before, and again, address the issue of full-service, quick-service restaurants, et cetera, in this district of the design commercial. Neighborhood business zones, there's a half dozen or so of neighborhood business zones in town. Again, the provision for full-service and quick-service restaurants, retail food establishments in the neighborhood business zone, this is more of a change in the sense that retail, full-service restaurants, et cetera, had not been permitted in the neighborhood business district before, but this is to allow for this.
But, but for clarification, they existed.
Yes.
They were grandfathered, so we have multiple.
I think there's two.
There's, there's at least three restaurants in neighborhood business zones now, but the regs didn't allow that, they grandfathered in. So the commission here is now specifically saying in the neighborhood business zone, which is Narroton, right near the Fodden River, and I think corner of Maple and Narroton, now can have, if they meet the requirements, get a special permit, a little more flexibility on these additional uses.
I think it's important to note for the record, again, these are special permits, so the issue is they have to come in, they have to meet the special permit criteria and standards in terms of compatibility with the location, et cetera.
Health, safety, welfare.
You have to not only meet the parking requirements, but you have to get a special permit showing you meet those standards in Section 1000.
And then the design office district. We had three different office districts that were established, I would say, starting on the 60th, et cetera, and the office market has fundamentally changed since that time. So these office districts, we had the design office, DOR 1 to DOR 5, and so these areas have now been merged into a design office district. Distinctions between them in terms of minimum lot size and use standards have been blended together, so that we now have an opportunity for these buildings to be fully occupied, productive parts of our local economy and business development, and to ensure that they continue to be relevant.
A lot of it is, what we've talked about, Glenn, is clarification in terms of being specific in terms of what types of office uses, not only executive administrative offices, but now clarifying that they can also allow medical or dental offices, dental clinic, medical or dental clinics by special permit, and as you saw at the residence at Selix Woods, now all office zones will allow assisted living, memory care, or a combination thereof.
And Mr. Flaherty had a couple suggestions that have used for like adult daycare or senior daycare.
Right. We've added childcare centers as such, and also in there now is part of the proposal, educational, philanthropic, cultural, recreational uses, serving a community need or convenience.
Where's Fitch Academy? What zone is that?
Fitch Academy is, I believe, it's in Thorndale Circle Office Park, so I'm thinking if it's not in the front building, it might be in the office business zone, it might be in-
The car dealerships, I believe, are in the SP, and then the florists are in the SP, and behind that everything's DO, I think, Jeremy.
So, kind of consistent.
Right, right here.
Right. Since it's behind the florist, it is in the office business zone.
So we already have an existing school, if you will, in one of these zones, too.
Zoning, there you go. We do have amendments to the off-street parking requirements. We cleaned this up a little bit in terms of distinctions between restaurants, the number of spaces that would be required, how we would deal with parking requirements for outside dining, something else we had talked about, and updated the parking standards for medical offices and similar types of facilities. The numbering system, as Jeremy indicated, the lettering system has been changed to group similar uses together, and it was inconsistent in the regulations about the size of parking spaces, the graphics were different texts, and so we cleaned up that provision as well, addressed the language in terms of the buffer area. The provisions which relate to hotels, motels, and inns are repealed. And then again, as Jeremy had indicated, the Regional Planning Agency, the name's changed, and so time to update the regs to reflect that as well. So that's an overview of the major changes in the regulations, the categories, the changes that are proposed, and also the proposed zoning map, which is here on the screen and also on the map before you here tonight, in terms of what the zoning categories would be proposed.
And this is a product of, I gather, what, three or four public discussions we had as a commission with you as we kind of sliced?
Many working sessions, I would say, over the last two, since the 2016 POCs, over the last two and a half years, if you will. We've been working on two major initiatives with the commission. One was our signage regulations and how those should be reconfigured, which the commission has worked through, and how this is the second major issue, which is our business districts, and how do we try to make them current and relevant for the issues that are going on in the marketplace today.
Okay. Mr. Ovani?
There's one thing that I, we talked about it for a while, and I apologize for not bringing it up at all, but one suggestion what I would have is that where the DB zone is and the DO zone is on Old Kings Highway, at Old Kings Highway North, I think it is. It's the piece that sticks out, specifically the property where Fuji is.
Yep.
North of that.
Yeah, it's up here.
Yeah.
Fuji, I think, is just south of Old Kings Highway. Fuji, I think, is just south of Old Kings Highway.
Right, I would suggest that we bring the DB zone over to the other side.
The DB zone does jump, I think this line here, Mr. Flaherty, is the edge of the right-of-way. I'll have to check that. Is there a slender property there, Jeremy?
I'm just looking at the map here, trying to figure out.
This is the one spot, right here. That's it, I think is the exact spot.
You're in the right area.
Yeah, it is. Memory serves correct. The restaurant is adjacent to the street, and I think it's the right-of-way, it's a wide right-of-way on 95 here.
Right, because it's on the side.
Oh yeah, you can see the road, Steve. It should be what?
Should be, should be DB, not DBO.
Right, we wouldn't, I think it's in DB now, in the DB zone, and it's going to stay, it's in DB 2 now, and it's going to be, become in the DB zone, as far as I can tell on this map.
So what's this piece here?
That's, that's the right-of-way, I believe, right? Is that, Glenn's got the big map, so, yeah, please.
Looks like it's just like space on the side of I-95, it's not.
See, Mike, that, that.
There's an inside.
Correct for a moment, prior to our time, I'm right here.
Yeah, so this is the right-of-way.
The edge of the right-of-way right here, it's a very wide right-of-way there. Right, so this is where?
This is, this is, I think if on your phone you can see.
That's the piece?
Yes.
So this is not, okay, so Fuji would be in here.
Correct.
And the ten percent.
I think it is now called Sushi.
We did not.
Okay.
We did not.
This piece, this, this is nothing, this is.
It is the right, the state right-of-way.
Okay.
The state would have to get very creative here.
Okay, so it's consistent with your, your comment, okay.
Understand it.
Got it.
That was just, that's, that's the area.
It was not our intention to make major changes such as that, our intention was to address the issue. Thank you, Mike.
Right, that, that location, correct from wrong, was studied significantly years ago, but.
It's unusual in that it's a large parcel that's served by public water and sewer, that really hasn't changed much in many, many years, really has opportunity to be used for many other things, and so as part of this proposal, we're just changing it from design business to, to design business, so there's really, really no major change in terms of what can go there.
Okay.
What, what are your thoughts?
Same, same piece of property.
Trader Joe's and.
No, no, behind it.
Correct.
Trader Joe's would be consistent with it, so it's that, it's the Old Kings Highway Strip.
Got it.
They studied it years ago, and nothing ever happened in terms of zoning changes.
Okay.
You good?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm going to make sure it's all on the same page, that's all. Okay, I'm fine.
I think you get a chance to look at it on your phone, aerial photograph, you won't have property loans on there unless the GIS would happen, but I think the idea here again is we were following the existing zone lines, property lines in that situation.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions? Comments, concerns, Jeremy, do you guys have anything? Oh, you have to read your.
I'll just start with the, we did refer this out as required by state statute. WestCog commented, so I'll read their comments aloud. That was an email dated March 4th from Kristen Floberg, Assistant Planner, WestCog. Thank you for submitting the referral. The opinion of WestCog staff is that the proposal is of local interest and with minimal intermunicipal impact, therefore it is not being forwarded to adjacent municipalities, and the regional staff is making no comment. State of Connecticut DEEP sent a letter dated February 26, 2019. Dear Commissioners, thank you for notifying this office. Our office has reviewed the amendments for consistency and policies of the Connecticut Coastal Management Act, and we find them to be consistent with the Connecticut Coastal Management Act. Please be advised, this determination is based on coastal management considerations only, and doesn't reflect other municipal planning and zoning considerations that apply. These comments are made in reflect in response to the review requirement of the state statutes, which requires that notification be sent to the state DEP prior to the public hearing, and our office is responsible for reviewing the proposal's consistency. So, regional planning agency essentially had no comments. State DEP said it was consistent with the Connecticut Coastal Management Act in terms of, but again, when you think about the coast, there's really no substantial changes to the residential zone. Darien's Coast is zoned residential, we're not rezoning any residential properties on the coast, so from that standpoint, I would expect them to say it's consistent. The commission has received a number of letters relative to the regulation changes for the record, you have them in your packets. Those include a letter from Mikey Krista, who's your professor, for here on behalf of Roost, the commission received their letter, a letter from Craig Flaherty, a letter from Alan Gray, I think, on, on the issue of the regulations and the merging of zones.
Mr. Homacki also, right?
And Mr. Homacki, I think chimed in more on the map changes.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Any other guests?
All right, so I guess what I'd like to do is open up the public comment. Glenn, would you mind just handing, showing him the mic as they, or just handing it to them as they come and go? Thanks, or have the chair do it. And then, you know, again, we're going to leave this hearing open, probably.
Let's see how it goes, but probably the inclination is, there's a lot of changes here, there's a lot to absorb, and so.
And I'd almost like, people that were interested, weren't able to attend, maybe watch it on TV 79 and then come back for a following hearing. So this process has been open, and we really want community feedback on this. You know, this is meant to be a collaborative effort, and a lot of these changes have been developed from what we've been hearing out in the street, if you will. So with that in mind, would anybody like to speak on this application? You always go first. Yeah, right there. And you can sit if you want, David, I mean, whatever you feel.
I have to run and pick up on my kids on Blue Street, I just got the text, so. I just came to speak in support of the zone changes as it relates to Roost, I'm a frequent customer, neighbor, I've watched it very closely, I'm a builder, I was a friend, and I think that they've been, so simply, I think I love it, you know, addition to the Darien business community, and we should do all of it together, help it thrive in this environment, and I don't see how it would have any negative impact, so I just wanted to share a different view on something that doesn't affect any of my work.
Well done. Anybody else like to speak to this application? Amy, come on up.
Hi, Amy Zapchakis, Rooty Law Group. I hope that you guys will forgive me, because I'm actually going to show you our two hats while I'm talking to you. The first is on behalf of a client who unfortunately couldn't be here this evening, and then I'm just going to speak just sort of generally as a zoning attorney who appears in front of you a lot. So first of all, and I'll say this by myself and on behalf of my client, I really commend you guys for taking on this project. There's no question that the number of different commercial zones in this town has been a challenge, and understanding, you know, why something's in one zone and not in another zone is really difficult. But I am here on behalf of David and Maria Feld, who live at 15 Edgewood Road, which is adjacent to the SB, current SB zone across the street from Rings End Lumber.
What's the address again? I'm sorry.
Their address is 15 Edgewood. And you will, or may or may not recall, that I appeared in front of you on their behalf objecting to a proposed SB zone text amendment in advance of these changes coming forward, which would have allowed Heights Pizza to move into the Town elect. So, and if I can just go over the last map over here.
Be careful.
No, no, so I don't trip on it. So, this area is proposed to be merged with the other SB zones, and I, I really do think that the changes and the additional uses that are being added to the SB zones, we're talking about the Boston Coast Road, do make a lot of sense. There are, for example, you know, one of the things that's being added are these quick restaurants, there are these quick-service restaurants in the, what's now the SB zone. However, I don't think what's being proposed makes sense, at least when we talk about all the additional uses being added for this little pocket here, and I'm talking about the pocket that's around Rings End Lumber. As was discussed when that application from Heights Pizza came forward, that area is, you know, it's Rings End Lumber, which as I understand it pre-exists a lot of the regulations, plus a few contractor really uses that arose that are complementary to Rings End. So turning that area into this broad-based SB zone with all of the retail, restaurant, and other commercial uses that are being proposed, I think is inappropriate. I would like to submit for the record.
You can put it down, she can probably hear. Put it down, just talk, yep.
A new letter that I, that I wrote, and I attached to it the letter that I submitted to you in, on June 4th, 2018, in connection with the Heights Pizza, because everything that I said at that time, I still think is relevant at this time.
And maybe you could clarify, if we go back to the SB zone reg as it exists now, are you?
Yes.
Is your client fine with that, or?
Yeah, the current, so the current SB zone is what was there when they purchased, and that's, that is fine, it's, we're adding a number of additional uses. Looking at the proposed regulations now, and one of the things that I state in my cover letters, what I don't want to do here is say, okay, let's make a new zone just for this little area, because that's exactly what we're trying to avoid. So looking at your proposed new regulations, what I think might make sense for that area is to rezone it as DB. That's a much more limited use, would allow what's there to continue to be there, would allow some of these service businesses, would allow, you know, office business uses, things that are more compatible with this little pocket that's tucked in a residential area.
And residential on the second floor.
I'm sorry?
They put residential on the second floor in DB.
Yes, correct.
Which is what's there now.
Right, exactly. So I think that actually is more compatible with, because I think part of what you're trying to do here, which I think makes a lot of sense, I'm sorry, I have no idea. What I think you're trying to do here that makes a lot of sense is making the zones match what's actually happening, and so I think you need to really look at that little area and make sure that what you're doing, and frankly, now I'm not talking on behalf of my clients, but in each one of these little pockets, make sure that you're not, I understand Glenn's desire to sort of not monkey around with the different zones too much, but if you're, if you're spending all this time on it, look at each pocket and say, does this zone, what we're rezoning, it makes sense here, or would a different zone make more sense? You know, and I think you'll find there are a few other areas in town, you know, as, as an example, you know, my building's on Old Kings Highway South, across the street from my building, which is office zone, across the street is commercial zone, but there's not a single commercial business, it's all office zone. So those are the kind of things that I think it's worth you guys taking a little more time to take a, take a second look at.
Okay, the other request I might have is if you take what we're requesting, or proposing, I should say, requesting, sorry, and literally redline the items that we've added to the service business zone in that area, would you be willing to do that for us as well? Just so I can kind of see, or?
Well, I would, however, my reluctance to do so has more to do with the other SB zones.
That's what I thought, yeah.
I mean, I really do think, and, 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 you know, again, it's a little challenging, this like two-hat thing, but if you'll bear with me, my clients don't really care that much what happens in the other zones. As a land use attorney, I do think that the changes you're proposing make a lot of sense for, for example, that, that area up near Norwalk that used to be SB. So I, I am reluctant to, I can do that for you if you'd like, but I'm not sure that that's as good of a use of anyone's time, because I fear, I fear that now I'm running into the idea of trying to make that its own zone.
Right, okay, understood, that's helpful.
How about if you had a meeting with Glenn privately, and talk about together?
No, I know.
Any other pending application?
Yeah, we're, we're already in the public hearing aspect, okay.
I have a quick question. So I'm just looking at our language from Glenn on DB, so you believe that that SB zone, including Rings End Lumber, should all be designated under the DB, which is allowing medical, dental offices, business, and professionals?
Yeah, that allows service businesses and anything that's existing, technically, to stay.
So simply changing that pocket to DB would be satisfactory?
Yes.
So, so just from a process standpoint, since we haven't noticed that, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, you have a different opinion, the process will probably, we'll have a discussion, we'll figure out whether or not to adopt the changes or leave as-is, and then, you know, basically close the hearing, make our decision, pass the resolution, and then if we wanted to change it to DB, that would be a separate application. Would that be?
No, no way.
Well, I mean, I think you should be, well.
We haven't noticed that as a DB, right, so?
Right, but I think that you, you know, especially because you're keeping the public hearing, I mean, what is the purpose of public comment if you can't make amendments to the pending application? If I was, if I was, if I had filed this application, we could make amendments to the application as we went along, because otherwise, your, the public comment is just going to be, I might as well just stood up here and say, "Don't approve this." You know, I mean, I think I need to, I think the process needs to be that you can make some changes as you go along.
You agree with that, sir? Jeremy? I'm not, I'm not quite there, but I could be convinced.
I'd have to think more about it in terms of looking at, at that point, looking at the uses in the DB and DB 2 zones, the purpose and intent, you know, right now, the background of purposes for design business one, this zone is intended to establish transitional business zone between the CBD and the zones on the periphery of that center. So we'd have to look at what Glenn has talked about in terms of the new background of purposes, and whether this service business zone, which is on West Avenue, is similar to the DB 2 zone's background of purposes, and what, what it might do to the other uses. So I'd have to take.
Yeah, and I guess I'm not, and to that point, I'm not so much looking at the background of purposes, which to me is, you know, helpful information as a planner, as someone who's filing an application, but not actually anything in and of itself enforceable.
It's guidance, though, and it's the method behind the madness, as I, as I kind of jokingly say. All right, so we'll have a little discussion, we really appreciate the comments, we're going to have to give it some thought, and from a process standpoint, we'll keep you up to date on that, and.
But she does have a point, it's a public hearing, you should be based upon the public testimony.
Guys, on this, I'm a rules and process guy, and so we'll check into it, I'm not saying no, I'm saying we're going to take the comments in, consider them, maybe even talk to legal counsel, we're going to keep this open now, and we'll decide, okay?
May I have a minute to put my hat on?
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you, sorry.
No, I really appreciate it. Again, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to push back, I, I think you made some really valid points on there, so I want to just make sure, from a process standpoint, we can, I see one step as not changing, not creating a service, or not merging the service businesses, I'm having a little more trouble in one foul swoop going to DB versus a two-step process.
And by all means, the last thing I want to do is any, is have you all do anything procedurally incorrect that ends up in some sort of, you know, lawsuit, that, that's by, but I'm just sort of suggesting to you.
Because we, like, the other property owners aren't really aware, or they, they see one proposal, right? Now you've come in, if I close the hearing and.
Totally, I think we need to follow the process. So I have a couple other comments that are just more generalized, just based on issues that I have had personally with the regulations and working with clients.
Great.
That I just wanted to bring up to you.
Thanks.
The first is, in the CBD zone, we have commercial sales and services, that's our main use in the CBD zone, but through the years, we've whittled away at the service half of that, to the point that I'm not really sure that I have any idea what a commercial service is, that is not a personal service or a financial service.
So when you say whittled away, I don't know which direction you're going with that.
We've whittled away at it so that we're not, we've, we've, well, to, to the point that it's clear to me that retail sales are allowed in the CBD zone, obviously.
Hundred percent, yeah.
But commercial services, which, based on the definition, are allowed in the CBD zone, I honestly do not know that I could tell a client, this is a commercial service that is permitted as a right in the CBD zone. I don't know what a commercial service is. That's not a personal service or a financial service.
Glenn, do you have?
Yeah. Or Jeremy?
This is something I have discussed, I did discuss with Glenn in the. This is something I have discussed, I did discuss with Glenn in the drafting process.
So I'm kind of, give me an example, like a commercial service that wouldn't be allowed in?
Well, that, I'm asking you the opposite, give me an example of a commercial service that is allowed in the CBD zone.
Give me an example of what, what in your mind is a commercial service, I guess is what I'm.
Manicure? That's a personal service.
That's a personal service.
No, that's my point, I can't think of.
Car rental?
Tire change? Yeah, I think we've, we've had very few through the years, it's, as you said, since we've refined it, that something's either financial service, personal service, I think there's very few things that are, I don't think of, but there's not a lot of commercials service. Commercial sales would be selling of anything retail.
Correct. And, and I think I have, I have a discomfort with that, because, you know, people see commercial sales and services are permitted in the CBD zone, and then they say, well, what about this? And I say, oh, no, that's a personal service. And in fact, what you've done in this current amendment is you've, you've expanded the definition of personal services, so now we're including, oh, I left my notes back there, but, you know, you're, you're including fitness studios, you're including really dry cleaners, there's, again, you know, someone, I think may, it may have been with Glenn, that we had the conversation, well, a personal service is if you're only serving one person at a time, but that's not.
So you don't, yeah, I guess I'm still having trouble with the point, the conclusion that the definition of commercial service is not clear, or what a commercial service is, is that kind of what you're getting?
Yes, I would almost prefer, it would, it would make my job easier, which is of course not your job, but, you know, I want to bring good applications to you. I think it would be more clear if that was just commercial sales.
Everything was, personal services and?
No, 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 that, that there was no commercial sales and services definition, that definition is just commercial sales, you've got a financial services definition, you've got a personal services definition, but don't tell me that commercial services are allowed in the CBD zone as of right, and then have us all stand here, all very bright people, and no one would tell me, what's a service that's allowed in the CBD zone as of right, that's not a personal service or a financial service?
Yeah, I just don't even know what I would define as a commercial, so like, give me an example of a commercial service.
I can give you one. Exactly, I can give you one.
Strike the word service.
Repairing a screen at a hardware store.
But that's, that's, a hardware store would be allowed.
Right, that would be retail.
That would be the primary.
Service inside there, too.
I mean, you want to say.
That's a subcategory.
All right, that is a good point, I got to think about that and look at it, and we'll, we'll definitely work with Glenn and staff on that one. Next one, that's, thank you.
And then the only other thing I wanted to bring up is that there were a number of changes that were approved by this commission in 2018 to the CBD zone, not a number, but a few minor changes that are not reflected in this amendment, so I don't know if that was intentional, or Glenn just didn't get those amendments, but the new, the draft that's being circulated now doesn't include the 2018 approved amendments in the CBD zone.
Doing this.
The, the whole, the basement and open space, that whole thing.
Right, well, there could just be a typo on our part, we didn't, maybe didn't carry it over.
That's what I'm trying to say, what has been put forward doesn't include those 2018.
Thank you, because that's going to be coming down the pipe very quickly, so, okay.
Okay, that's all that matters right now, and thank you very much, again, thank you for all the time you've put into this, because I do think it's a very important change, and I definitely appreciate all the work this one put into it.
Thanks for the comments.
Thank you.
Anybody else out there? Mr. Vicaro?
Would you like to come on?
Uh, yeah, if you wouldn't mind, I'm sorry.
And please introduce yourself as a resident.
You may sit if you'd like as well, whatever.
John McCarroll, and I, resident area, have a couple of commercial properties in town.
Could you spell your last name?
E. L. K. Victor A. C. C. A. R. O.
Thank you very much.
So, first I want to talk a little bit about neighborhood business, we worked very closely with the commission, and redid the whole neighborhood, there's a lot of inconsistencies right over by St. John's Church, where part of the, part of the properties are zone residential properties, our neighborhood business, we fixed all that, and we built the two properties that are there today. I think at the time, it was a little bit of concern and debate around a takeout restaurant, which was Roost, which, you know, proved that it was, not only was it needed in the neighborhoods, it turned out to be very successful, and that project worked out pretty well. Obviously, in the correction, the amendments that you're proposing, it's, the idea is to define the different types of restaurants, but make them permissible in that, so we're very supportive of that. And frankly, I think one of you said it earlier, I think, John, you said it, which is, there's already restaurants in neighborhood business zones, and, you know, because of their non-conformity use, and they've been there for a long, long time, so I think it, you know, eliminated some of the inconsistencies. Clearly, Roost would like some more seats or chairs, and they'll tell you more about what their needs are when they come up. I also want to talk about the, the DB1 and DB2 zone, we also have another property, DB2, down at the other end of the Post Road, very close to the Duchess.
The one that's currently going under renovation?
Yeah, it's under construction. And as owner of something in DB2 and looking at DB1, it's kind of hard to distinguish why they're different.
I can't believe you're talking to us about it.
Right, so I think consolidating them is a very good idea, we do not have a restaurant tenant in mind, but, but that neighborhood is sort of, has a lot of inconsistencies as well, where there are restaurants, but they're not necessarily allowed in that particular zone, we have Rory's, we have Missouri, which has now been sold and transferred, I believe, we've got Duchess, we've got the Two Diners, we've had what used to be, I think Harper, now it's a gym, but there's, there certainly is restaurants in that area. We don't have a restaurant tenant, that's not what this is about, but it does seem that we should allow some limited amount of, whether it's takeout, or I think you called it convenience.
Quick service.
Yeah, quick service, exactly, maybe something like that, because that's generally an on and off the highway sort of area, and frankly, I don't think it competes with downtown at all, because it's, it's much more of that type, you know, quick stop, get some food, and move on, so it's not elegant, you know, sort of, maybe Rory's might be considered elegant dining.
Yeah, be careful.
Be careful. So that's probably it, I, I, again, I think that the, what I think you said earlier as well, is that, you know, consolidating some of these, clarifying, making it simpler to understand, I think I'm supportive of all of it, so, thank you.
Thanks for your comments, John.
Hi, everyone, I'll take a seat.
Yes, certainly.
I'm Krista Petra-Faso, I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my husband.
She's going to need a spelling.
Yes, I do it every day.
I'm sure.
P is in Paul, I E, T is in Tom, R A, F is in Frank, E S is in Sam, O.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So just here in support of the, the changes, we've reviewed them in detail, as John mentioned and as David mentioned, we're in a neighborhood zone, we are a food establishment, we really appreciate the clarity around the definitions, and we.
You guys were the catalysts, to be honest with you, I mean, from the feedback we heard from the community, Ms. Reva.
It's the first thing we heard, it's the first thing we heard when we opened, you know, given our space, and given we have two full-service bathrooms, there, there's a need, and folks are happy to stay when they can, but we do see people, families in particular, that want to be able to sit down. And just to give you a little bit of background on our process, too, given the concept, we've had to use to-go materials and things like that, where we haven't been able to use mugs and plates, because operationally, it doesn't make sense when you only have a few seats. So given these changes, we're interested in understanding sort of where the parameters would be defined around the parking, and the processes in order for us to kind of request that, where somebody needs a special permit and whatever else, but for us, you know, we have to consider the investment needed to sort of reorganize our front house, getting ceramics, mugs, all of that, but it would absolutely benefit our customers, and that's the number one thing, is, is the experience and being able to offer it to our customers.
Do you want to get at least a preliminary answer from Jeremy on this?
Well, we did, Krista and I did speak, she had questions, and we talked about whether, if these provisions go through, which would eliminate for her type of business, which is now called convenience food service, and the commission discussed this, is there would no longer be a limit of eight seats, whether applicants like Roost would need to come back to the commission, because originally, they were limited to eight seats, so Sono Bakery and Roost and others in town have been limited to eight seats. So if they were, if the new regs go through, the commission adopts them, what would the procedure they have to follow, would they have to come back to the commission to amend their special permit to add indoor seating, and I said we should discuss that during this public hearing, I think that was what the commission did intend, that businesses like this could come back to the commission, be approved as a quick service restaurant, come in with a plan for however many seats, the commission could look at parking and other aspects, and grant a special permit for quick service restaurants.
And that's a shared parking agreement amongst the?
Right, Mr. Vicaro has a shared parking agreement between the two properties, and it's designed such that all the users, both first-floor commercial and upstairs residential, can share those parking spaces.
So I think, yeah, and I think the way Jeremy just outlined is perfect, this way the commission gets another look, there's more discussion, your neighboring tenants will also have the ability to input on the parking, so that, I mean, there is a regulation now, in terms of number of spots per square feet, if I'm not mistaken, right, so you have kind of the basics of the information, kind of build your plan, and reapply and work with Mr. Vicaro and his other tenants, so, but again, I think the intent is to give some relief to businesses like yours, because we thought the number of seating, seats were too stringent, but.
We have a petition, so the commission will be thrilled, we do hope everything goes through, and we'll stay close to this, and as soon as we have confirmation, then we will proceed with developing our proposal, or we'll probably parallel that then.
Perfect.
One thing I would add is that those two buildings and the parking lot operates a little bit like a shopping center, so it's really on the landlord to make sure that his tenants are going to be happy, so if one tenant's got a big parking requirement.
And they have their designated spots, there are tenant-designated spots, and of course, you know, staff and all of us, and ideally, our customers are adhering to that, and we were very close to with John.
And again, yeah, and it's not just the residential tenants, it's going to be the commercial tenants, and if there, you know, if there's ways that you guys can plan, maybe find a couple off-site spots for your employees across the street, I'm not sure, you know, that, that would be something that you might want to consider when you, if this were to be approved, that you want to come back to us.
Sure, and we already, we already tried to do that as well, but we will take that into consideration, of course, as well, but thank you all very much for this work, we really appreciate it.
No, thank you.
We appreciate the support of local family businesses.
Cool, thank you. Anybody else? Would you mind just grabbing the mic, sir? Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Aldo Criscollo, C.R.I.S.C.U.L.O.
Thank you.
And I'm not, I don't really get fond of public speaking, but I'm going to come out of my comfort zone and make an effort. So I'm obviously in favor of all of these updates, and really, I just wanted some clarity really, from, obviously, I had an application in front of planning and zoning, I bought a property, 168 West Avenue, which is in an SB zone, and it allowed for a restaurant by special permit, but there was the requirement that the restaurant needed to have 1,200 square feet of dining space, so I put an application in front of the commission to see if we could change that text, and you had made a point, Mr. Sini, you had made a point to explain that there were really two applications, that the first application was just going to deal with that change of text, that's not really the way it went, because everybody kept talking about Heights Pizza, except me, which I really regret that, I should have came up and spoke a little bit, but I, so my question to the commission is, what has changed? I mean, you're proposing, you're updating the SB zone to remove that text in, in the zoning regulations, so what, I went through a considerable amount of expense with an attorney, parking, a traffic study, and everybody on the commission was not in favor of it, except you.
First of all, we never voted, so none of us predetermined the application, I want to be very clear about that. Two, you removed that application, okay, so let's set that very clear. Let's look at now your question, which is a very valid question, what, between the, what are we proposing right here by merging the two SB zones? So Jeremy, could you clarify that question for us?
Right, I think as the commission was working, as Mr. Sini started discussing earlier, working with Mr. Chalder in 2014, and on long-range planning issues and the town plan and conservation development, Mr. Chalder pointed out a number of issues to the commission, inconsistencies, discrepancies, we've heard about some of them tonight, in terms of standards and things more relative to the proposal for medical clinics, the regs didn't even touch on medical clinics, those are, need to be addressed in the regulations, to, I'll call it modernized regulations. So we have a situation here where, as Ms. Appakas mentioned, the issue of, it appears to work for a small town like Darien, I think it was 14 or 15 different commercial zones, so Mr. Chalder worked with us on saying, how do we reduce that to a more manageable number, and make some of the inconsistencies, try to deal with some of the inconsistencies. So when you look at the service business east zone, which is the area by Bertucci's and TV Bank on the eastern end of town, that was created, I think in the mid-'80s, it's very, very similar to the service business zone, which is now, I'll call it the florist up in the northeast corner of town, Springdale Florist, there's other service business zones where you are, and then there's Whole Foods and the assisted living facility, Atria, that's a service business zone. So there's a number of service business zones, and there's one service business east zone. So Mr. Chalder worked with us and looked at, what are the differences in these zones? What are the nuances, the little differences in terms of setbacks, uses, permitted uses? If we're going to change the zones, which ones should we add, which ones should we take out? For example, I think right now hotels, motels, and inns are allowed in the service business zone, if you have five acres, and the commission said, there used to be three hotels in Darien, there are now none, and the commission said, take that use out, I think Darien may have outgrown it, and the commission said, let's propose removing that from the regulations, she'll see that as taken out of the service business zone. So the commission also talked about a little bit, the provisions, and one of the standards, as you know now, is in the service business zone, there's a minimum 1,200 square feet of customer seating area. If I recall, I'm not positive of this, that is not in the service business east zone for some reason, so it was in one service business zone, but it wasn't in service business east. So if the commission considered combining the zones, which way were they going to go? Because you have to make a decision, do you allow these restaurants by special permit, but do you put that 1,200-square-foot seating minimum in the provision? And when we worked with Mr. Chalder, he said, no, we understand that there's different service business zones, but the proposal put forth in section 753, specifically allows, again, by special permit, so whether you, or someone who wanted to go into Bertucci's, or any of these other service business zones, would still need a special permit, which would have to prove with the traffic study and other testimony, that you comply with section 1,000 of the regulations. So in this combined zone, the commission would allow by special permit, full-service restaurants, quick-service restaurants, and other uses, and you can see actually in here, there's a typo in here because we.
F, right?
F.
Yeah, I caught that before, too.
Don't worry, okay, but veterinary hospitals, indoor recreation facilities.
Restaurants with drive-throughs, but only on the Boston Post Road. So again, the commission had to, if you're going to merge these zones, instead of having service business, service business east, the commission had to make a decision on some of these uses, which one do you put in, do you say to the people in service business east, now you have a 1,200-square-foot minimum, or do they eliminate the minimum? There were other minimums, if I recall, Glenn, in other zones, and I think the commission has, as part of their restructuring of the way restaurants are defined, they, just what the folks at Roost just talked about, they eliminated seating maximums. Again, you'd still have to prove you comply with parking and those requirements, and meet section 1,000, which means you fit in the neighborhood, but the situation we had at Roost and Sono Bakery are, they have big, big areas like this room, but they're only allowed eight seats, you can imagine what this room would look like if only eight seats.
So, so if I may just kind of summarize, you know, we're trying to merge the two very like zones, so to, your, your question is?
It's really about timing, because my understanding is that these discussions were already started--
Right.
--in 2014--
Yeah.
--and they were, you know, fine-tuning these discussions. So, you know, I just, I don't have real clarity of why I had to even have that proposal. Why did I even have that application, if you were discussing it, already eliminating--
Well, we did discuss it during your application, that we were in discussions of this, right?
But there was--
So we're not going to discuss the past application, so--
Okay.
And you, I think, I think you, this, you should, as a property owner, have a concern whether or not--
Yes.
--we implement this, okay? So I--
If I can speak on that, I'll write that down. So I own 168 West Avenue, it borders the Fells property--
Yeah.
--and I'm sorry, I don't remember the attorney's name.
Ms. Abatakas, yeah.
She made, she gave a little bit of an explanation of their concerns.
Yeah.
I'd like to address those concerns. The Fells live on Edgewood, which is up the hill behind our property, and there are some other neighbors here that live on Edgewood. West Avenue is a busy road, it has the busiest, one of the busiest businesses in Darien, across the street, and they, when they bought their property, Rings End was already there.
And your buildings, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So this, this, I don't have real, a real good understanding of what their concerns are, in terms of, what are they afraid of, the usage on our property or neighboring properties in that little pocket? I, I'm--
Yeah.
I don't get it, I really don't. And most of the neighbors on Edgewood don't even see West Avenue. I know--
Okay.
--the neighbors don't see it.
So I get your question and concern, I'm not going to speak for them, Ms. Abatakas kind of listed a few concerns--
Yeah.
--but to my Commission members, this is exactly why we wouldn't take the double step in this process, because now you have a property owner that would lose certain property rights in a zone that he purchased in. So I want to be very clear that--
Respect.
Okay? I'm sorry, but that's not our consideration, but this is a perfect example of why we wouldn't make that double step. So we hear your concerns, if we don't merge it, we would, in this, in this process, we would keep it the existing zone as is, and then somebody would have to come back and apply for another step in the process.
Be more restrictive.
Okay, and so if that occurs, then you would have the opportunity to come and speak against that proposal. So is that, is that helpful to you, understanding it? In the meantime, focus on this proposal--
Yes.
--and Jeremy can tell you exactly, because tonight, it's a little difficult, because we're trying to move along, but he can distinctly tell you what would change if we merged the two service business zones. Is that, is that helpful?
Yes.
Okay, Jeremy, you can--
Yeah, we'll sit down with anyone who wants to go through and--
So just give him a holler, and he's pretty accessible, and you can do it over the phone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm, I'm, hi, I'm Joe Criscull, Aldo's brother, I'm a co-owner of 168 West Avenue, and my concerns are based on the fact that the Fells hired an attorney, and Darien has 17,000 citizens, and I find it unbelievably audacious that one person could propose, like, the attorney, that, oh, why don't we put it in another zone, because my client doesn't have the same sentiments as the rest of the town? How could that be fair? That, if that happens, I will be a little bit outraged, because--
Okay, and I hear you, and you heard me, and that, that will not be the process here.
Right.
The process here is talking about merging two zones, or sticking with the current zone.
Right.
They do have the right to propose a zoning amendment, but you guys will be fairly warned--
Right.
--the entire town will be--
Right.
--and you can then comment on that proposal.
Right, like, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to propose that the Fells house gets rezoned, but, you know, I wouldn't mind. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Hold on, Jamie, you've been up first, somebody else stood up, okay? And, and, and we're not getting into arguments over individual properties, folks, or, okay? Okay, okay. Sir?
My name is Neil Doying, D-O-Y-I-N-G, and I'm a resident at 10 Andrew Road, and would like to make a couple of comments on items one and two, and the proposed changes. Item one about the restaurants, the definitions, specifically how those changes impact the S-B zone that is made in our property, but also have application to the wider uses of those definitions. Quick service restaurants are high-intensity in-and-out patterns, weekend and night hours of operation, and this use is, I don't think, appropriate for small lots, like, neighboring the residential areas like the S-B zone on West Avenue, and they should perhaps be limited to the S-B zone of 495, just like the drive-through restaurants. Parking for quick service restaurants is being proposed to be cut requirements, and I think if you look at Chipotle, at least before the food problems, they have, the parking there is very problematic, for, you know, you have many spaces for a high-in-and-out type of business, and so I think a cut in parking would create more problems. But also, what's important to take into account is the Uberization of food service and dining that's taking place, and restaurant business is moving more towards a delivery and take-out business than sit down and dine. And so I think that needs to be taken into account, that by cutting parking spaces for quick service, you're promoting the development of pseudo-restaurants, or what's often called ghost kitchens, where a restaurant can just have a kitchen, and they're really just--
Take out.
--people take out and deliver.
Can I just stop you there one second, because I want to just clarify, are we cutting the parking requirements on, and I want you to be, understand that we're, just in my mind, we're using an industry-standard word, QSR, quick service restaurants, and replacing the, what was it, convenience food service?
There is no definition, there's no parking requirement now for quick service restaurant, because the definition doesn't exist now. So what the Commission's proposing under Section 904, for a quick service restaurant, is one space per 150 square feet of gross floor area, there's no parking requirement for areas in the basement or attic that are used exclusively for storage. The standard now for convenience food service is also in Section 904, that would be 904-- make sure I got it right here.
We're putting you on the spot tonight, Jeremy.
This is, restaurant or place dispensing food, excluding patron bar area, one space for each 100 square feet of gross floor area, no parking requirement for areas in the basement or attic that are used exclusively for storage.
I'm sorry, what section are you, just like--
904H.
And that is a requirement for which?
Restaurant or place dispensing food, excluding patron bar area.
I can tell, I can tell you that 6.6 and 10 per thousand parking is really high. Office parks are usually three to four.
My reading, and I may be incorrect in this, obviously, is that some of the uses that no, we captured in the QSR were not just convenience food, but also some of the more limited seating required restaurants will also be captured now in this QSR. And the requirement in mass cases was one parking space for every 250 square feet, and now it's being cut down to one for 100 square feet. That's not, is that incorrect?
Uh, that's--
It actually goes the other way here. If it's one per 250, is four per thousand, one per 100 is 10 per thousand.
Okay.
If you, it's easier to use the denominator than the denominator.
So the parking issue aside, the issue of quick service restaurants being this very in-and-out type nature of business, late hours, weekend business, is very different from the existing businesses which are in the special, the S-B zone by West Avenue, and would significantly change the exist, the nature of that area, and the nature of the community, which I think the current regulations protect and support.
There is a restaurant, you know, with limitations and that, okay?
Right, with limitations, and because of those limitations, it prevents, I think, a certain type of development that would bring in those kind of hours of business. And so that also takes into account that full-service restaurants are removing the square-footage requirement for seating control, that also promotes development of the Uberization of food establishment, food establishments where the majority of the business could be in-and-out delivery, and not just sit down, and it creates a very different environment, and during the traffic patterns in business and operating hours. So we are opposed to allowing, changing those definitions for restaurants in S-B zones, and again, we're talking specifically about the S-B zone on West Avenue in particular, and taking away the current restrictions that can promote and protect the environment.
Great, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else who hasn't spoken yet? I'm Ms. Abatakas.
I appreciate this, and I will be very brief. I am not up here to make any additional arguments, one way or the other, you have my information. However, I did have a concern about one of the statements that Jeremy made, because he wasn't looking at the regulations. The S-BE zone also has the 1,200-square-foot requirement, and does not allow these smaller restaurants. So the, I, while the regu, while you are merging the SB and SBE zone, you are adding a number of uses, which, as I stated previously, may make a lot of sense, because perhaps you're conforming the zone in some instances to what's there, but I do think, clarity, you are not simply merging SB and SBE, you are adding new uses in that zone.
Got it, okay, no, I appreciate it, and Jeremy's flying by, you know--
Speaking from the seat of his pants.
No, no, I didn't mean it like that, no.
I thought I had to--
He's definitely, he's not doing that, he's, he's trying to keep up with the questions.
Right, no, and correct, that 674B--
Hold on, Ms. Abatakas, I have one question for you.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Jeremy.
674B, which is service business east, allows by special permit, restaurants provided at least 1,200 square feet of indoor space devoted to tables and seating. Service business zone, 664B, same provision, restaurants provided at least 1,200 square feet of indoor space devoted to customer tables and seating. Related to that, the DC zone, 634B, restaurants provided such use contain at least 800 square feet of indoor space. So I think Glenn, if I recall, we got rid of, did we get rid of the provision in the DC zone, is that, I'll put Glenn on the spot, but I think--
Right back at you.
I hope you're called out for misspeaking, Jeremy.
I think that's what we did, that's what we were aiming to do, was, let me just double-check.
All the roles are reversing now.
Yes.
Hold on, hold on, one sec, one sec. I'll let you go.
Name is sleeker than us.
While Glenn's looking--
My understanding, when we first were discussing all of these, the last time we were here in the Mather Center, we were not changing that square footage requirement in the West Avenue S-B zone, but I could have been--
Yeah.
--this understanding--
Now it's gone.
--because I remember pointing out--
Yeah, now it's gone.
--that those restaurants were going to come over, and that we had just seen the applications previously, but I thought that it wasn't going to be changing that requirement.
No, that was, that's gone.
But it did--
So my recollection is that the square footage, all the restaurants are a special permit use, and all of the districts where they're permitted, so that gives the Commission the tools, if you will, to evaluate them, and having a square foot threshold of 800 or 1,200 square feet, could you have a restaurant at 750 that would be okay, or 1,150? So this is, the special permit criteria could provide the Commission the protection. So the language, and my understanding was it was taken up for that reason, I think this is exactly the reason we have the application for the Commission, so that you can have a chance to look at these standards, and based on the testimony here tonight--
In the public--
--decide, taking that as appropriate, or whether it's something that should be put back.
All right, so my reason for asking, now do you understand why it would be a two, I believe it should be a two-step process, from, you know, if, not just rejecting the merging of the service business, but going that extra step?
Yes, I do think that there is, there is, it should be some flexibility for you all to fine-tune your own application in response to the commentary that is received. However, what you ultimately do, you know, I think there has to be, there does need to be proper notice to the, to the town about, you know, what changes are being proposed.
Okay, thanks, appreciate that. Any other, yes, sir, please.
My name is Robert Konstantinos, K-O-N-S-T-A-N-T-I-N-I-S, I own 164 Old Kings Highway South, it's my understanding that you want to take the property and make it all residential?
Uh, hold on, is, that's the next public--
That's the next--
Yeah, yeah, oh, no, no, but I can understand, we'll be--
I'm almost there.
We're almost there, yeah.
I'm brushing up.
Yeah, and--
You can even just sit right there, we'll, we'll close, or continue, and then we'll--
And, and, well, and anybody else would like to speak on this application? All right, seeing none, I definitely, I think it would be appropriate to continue it. I encourage anybody who's interested to reach out to our Planning and Zoning Office. Jeremy's going to give us a date of our next public hearing on this.
Next week might be too soon?
Yes.
So we would be looking at it, April 9th, it's a Tuesday? I can tell you which room in a second. April 9th, that meeting would be in room 119 of Town Hall.
Okay, 8 o'clock.
8 o'clock.
That will probably be one of the earlier agenda items, because we're continuing it.
Yep.
I really deeply appreciate everybody's input here, this process was meant to be collaborative with everybody, we've heard a lot of good comments, like the next application, we're not, we want to hear these comments, so I encourage you over the next couple of weeks, if you think of anything else, please email them to Jeremy Ginsburg, his email's right on the website, and you're also welcome to come and speak at the next public hearing. And I thank you for, Attorney Abatakas and others, for commending us to, you know, try to simplify things, and for those that don't deal with this on a week-to-week, month-to-month basis, do we have an old map with you? Do you have the old, the original, as it stands now?
I have.
It might be tough to see, I didn't know if you could just hold it up and see how the different, how many different colors were up there, and different, I mean, it was, it's just, it was insanity, in a way. So our, our goals are to simplify this for the town, and I'll leave it at that. So, again--
April 9th, 8:00 PM, in room 119 at Town Hall.
All right, thank you. We're going to go on to the next agenda item.
Can we move to continue?
Oh, I'm sorry, I haven't, I haven't done that.
I'll, like, move to continue.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Yep.
Thank you. Nice, man, you're--
You've definitely taken, must be the snook. Yeah, how many others?
A lot.
Are we, are we able to move on?
Yes.
Amendment to zoning map, COBM number 2, 2019, put forward.
Planning and zoning Commission, Mrs. Reba, would you like to continue this?
Certainly, this is the proposal to amend the Darien zoning map to rezone the following six properties. The first, 273 West Avenue, rezone the entire property from the DC NHR to a R residential 1/5 zone. Number two, 1973 Boston Post Road, a portion of the property to be rezoned from R 1/3 to NB neighborhood business. Number three, 6 Rings End Road, to rezone the entire property from NB to R 1/2 acre zone. Number four, 164 Old Kings Highway South, rezone the entire property from SB to R 1/2 acre zone. Number five, 55 Boston Post Road, rezone a portion of the property from R 1/2 to SB. And finally, number 1441 Boston Post Road, rezone a portion of the property from DOR-1 to SB, oh, sorry, and SB to DO. The proposed zoning map amendments are on file and available in the Town Court Office and the Planning and Zoning Office for inspection and online.
So I'll just get started before Glenn gets started, similar to the last process, we're trying to just clean things up, however, in this case, we know we're dealing with individual property owners, so our goal is to allow them to have a very loud voice in this process. And I'll leave it to Glenn, without you continuing.
Mr. Chairman, I want all the container metrics, which is perhaps as part of this process, for the instances where there were specific zone changes, so the weapon of reconfiguration of regulation that caused the zone to change, these were specific zone change recommendations that came up. So on the map, I'll sort of go through them one by one, I think I've got aerial photographs here, which will allow us to have a quick discussion of what the proposal is. The first one is the 273 West Avenue, I apologize, it's a little bit-- little bit dark here.
Should I try to get the light maybe for this? Would you mind just, thank you, sir.
You just. You playing with those until we find a way to come over here?
It's the only one or, that's perfect. That helps save time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, here we have West Avenue to the north. This is Edgerton, Heights Road here. Here's Palmer Shopping Center. What we have is a situation where the property here at the corner of Edgerton and West is zoned at the present time, DC with the Neuroton Heights overlay. As part of our prior application, we are proposing to change this to the Neuroton Heights district. There is a situation here where there's a walkway from Palmer's Market to West Avenue. And there are four individual residential lots here which have been developed with two houses. So, the lots, if you will, each residential assemblage is two lots with one house. These two lots are zoned residentially , the R one-five zone. These two lots were DC with the Neuroton Heights overlay. So, as part of looking at this, we said this is a stable residential area. The properties across the street are residential. The recommendation I had made for consideration was that if this property was to be developed commercially and come in with a curb cut on West Avenue, that could be a very challenging situation for the commission. And that because it's zoned residentially as its, excuse me, it's zoned.
Commercial.
DC, this is owned residentially. Properties across the street are residentially. Perhaps we should consider a residential district here. Property owners are out of town. They've asked that this item be continued. I would encourage the commission to do that. I think the reason again that this was considered was that if the property was to orient either this way or this way, it could be fine. If it wasn't going to be oriented this way, there's an attempt to put a driveway on West Avenue, it could create a significant difficulty.
Okay. So, we do have on record their letter.
They are out of town.
Out of town.
They were surprised, if you will, about the application. They would like to be able to respond to this. They're not in town. It's fair that we continue this hearing and.
No, they've actually, they've actually said that, oh, they've asked us to continue. But I thought they were kind of against it.
I think we've made pretty clear that.
I did speak to one of the property owners who, let's say, wasn't sold on the idea, but they were so focused on the fact that they were out of town, they said, look, we really just want more time to think about it.
Okay.
So, that you have their letter.
Okay. Okay. Next one.
Next application is 1973 Post Road. This is the neighborhood business zone on the Post Road. I've overdrawn it here in terms of the rectangle. We have a situation in the back where the property line extends to the rear. I think in the materials, the application package that Jeremy put together is a, I guess, a triangular sliver. Is that probably?
That's probably the best phrase. It's right behind Mama Carmella's and the Puritan. It's that parking area, a small corner of that parking area in the back left of the property is now, and has been for a long, long time, residentially zoned.
By having it in the neighborhood business zone, it could be calculated for lot coverage or other standards where parking could be proposed as part of an activity. It comes before the commission. You can review the appropriate buffering and other things. But we have a lot which is split zoned. It actually can create some more challenges. So, this is again, one for the commission to consider what could be the appropriate zoning of this category. And I've overdrawn it here on this slide, but the map that Fred and Jeremy put together shows the triangular sliver on this particular property.
And in terms of precedence, we've been changing zoning lines to follow property tax lot lines.
I think that that is generally a good practice because again, allows the business property to be used to calculate coverage and other things associated with that. And again, the commission, the regulations allow for protection of the neighboring residential area through buffers and other things so that.
So, we've done that in the past?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
He's not.
In fact, across the street, Mr. McCaw was here earlier.
Correct.
We have comments from the property owner?
In this situation, we do not. Thank you, Jeremy. Moving on to the next property, which is in the same neighborhood. It's at the corner of, so this, we're just looking over here now, the fire station, Route 1. Here's Rings End Road headed out. There is a business zone on the corner in the business zone. There is a small parcel here which is like 600 something acres. It's about the size of the, of the house.
Yes.
Which is residential use, has been residential for quite some time. It's in a business zone district. It's again, a situation where it appears that, you know, it's going to continue to be residential. And so, we did get a letter from this property owner and they are in support. They would like it to be in a residential district.
That's correct.
As opposed to a business district. So, again, it's a residential use in a business district and what should we do with the property line here? It's tiny. It could be 600 something.
But that, that site just sold and the whole property get redone?
Yes, the house was just.
Just redone.
Redone.
Just redone. Okay.
Oh, that was the one.
As a house.
Yeah.
Behind Christian Science Reading Room. Next one.
Moving way down to the, oh, no, I'm sorry. This is 164 Old Kings Highway South. The library is here, cemetery across the street, car dealership in the front. This is a residential lot at the corner of.
Cross Street and Old Kings Highway. The building between that and Boston Post Road is Dr. LaTrenta's office. You have, you got the letter both from the property owner here and Dr. LaTrenta and one of the neighbors on this one. Go ahead.
So, I think if I understand correctly, the property owner and the doctor would like it to remain business and the residential owner across the street would like it to be residential.
That's correct.
So, it's business today. Again, the challenge becomes one in a situation such as this that if somebody chose to try to develop it, now you're going to have a commercial driveway on a residential street. If it's combined with adjacent property, so the question is what's our default position? And is it residential? If somebody wants to rezone it to business because it's part of the plan, then maybe that's a more logical approach. But again, these are, these are situations that are a little out of the norm.
Yeah. Okay. So, we have, so in that, in that case, we definitely have the property owner not in favor. Okay. Thank you.
Going all the way up here. Now, we're at the Post Road at the Norwalk Line. The, is it TD Bank?
TD Bank.
TD Bank. The property has, the zone line is a setback from the street, but the property line actually makes a little curve here. And so, they're unable to use this property for lot coverage or other things. So, again, the proposal is why have a split zone property for a business? If they chose to do anything here, they'd have to come back to you for site plan approval, you do appropriate buffering and everything else. But if they wanted to put an addition on or do something else, they could perhaps do that.
Right. In this case, one specific, unique circumstance about this is that back parcel or that back piece of the parcel, the back part of the property has a conservation easement over it, which would in essence preclude any development of it. But the question now is that zone line just splits right through the middle of the property. It's a parallel line to Boston Post Road. And so, the question for the commission is, does it make more sense to have that whole property be in one zone even though for practical purposes, it's not likely to make a difference because of that existing conservation easement?
Did you hear from anybody regarding that?
There are some neighbors here who do have comments.
Okay.
But we did not hear from the property owner.
Okay.
And the last one is, excuse me, the library, which is a somewhat complicated situation in the sense that the property right now is split in zones between, the front part will go to OB, the, oh, excuse me, the whole property will go to OB as part of this, but it's also the municipal.
Wait, I'm sorry. Which?
DO.
DO.
DO, correct. Because the property behind that, which is white here on this map, is the police station.
But that's not a MU zone?
It will be when you move ahead, which allows for the commission again to deal with.
But that wasn't zoned as.
That wasn't the MU zone.
Yes, it is on the MU.
Okay. So.
Yes, it is. I'm sorry.
It's a MU zone.
All right. So, let's, hold on. So, right now, the notice says rezone a portion of property from DOR one.
And SB.
And SB to DO is, but MU is an overlay, right?
MU is the overlay. That's not changing.
Okay.
But one of the questions.
This is going to be real interesting, right? Because we're not going to, we're.
Right. I spoke to Alan Ray, the library director, and we talked about it. He's generally in favor of whatever gives them more flexibility down the road to allow for expansion, flexibility on coverage, things like that. As you know, the library is pretty much maxed out, but they're, they're, they could always use more. And they've been talking about more, potentially more. I don't think it frankly makes a big difference one way or the other if you look at the various zones.
Well, especially if they're using the MU overlay.
MU zone is less restrictive than whatever we're going to put the underlying zone.
All right. So, but what, what could ultimately happen is where one of the requests is making, oh, no, MU will always be an overlay zone.
It will always be an overlay zone. I think the only thing that we had noticed, I think, is DO allows for a three-story building, but the MU overlays a two and a half.
Okay. All right. So, the library director's in favor and you did hear from him. Okay.
I don't think he said he's, he's not opposed.
I'm not, I'm sorry.
He's not opposed. He's in favor.
Not opposed is.
Give them the most flexibility.
All right.
So, Mr. Chairman, those are the six properties in terms of the stories in front of them.
Okay. Perfect. Any other questions? Oh, yeah. That would be, that's really helpful, actually. I'm going to open up the public comment. You don't have to stand. You can be relaxed. Sure. Just watch yourself over there.
I'm Robert Konstantinos. I'm the owner of 164 Old Kings Highway South.
Bonnie, do you need a?
I've got it.
K-O-N-S-T-A-N-T-I-N-I-S.
Thank you.
And my understanding with the hopeful is to change the property that I own, all residential, partial residential and business. I actually live in Darien. Been here for five years. I'm bringing up my children here. I love the town. So, just wanted to let you know that. The only thing I want to do is leave it the way it is.
Okay.
I purchase this investment property and that's the way I like it. If you look here, H-N-L Chevrolet, this is parking. So, it's a contradiction, you know? You're saying it's resident, that is only residential. You're saying only Old Kings Highway South is all residential. It's not. Because the parking lot, H-N-L Chevrolet is, is close to it. So, it's really contradiction. So, saying all, you know, Old Kings Highway South is all residential is not true, actually.
But, but again, for the record, you're the property owner and you do not want to see the zone changed.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your comments.
Sorry.
And I'm just trying to make notes. If anybody else wants to come in, just give me one second.
That's why we're, the zoning jumps the room.
Yeah, I know. It's, yeah. All right, sir. Just grab the mic.
Hi there. My name is Michael Colabella. I live at 11 West North Road.
Okay. Yep.
And that is the middle house. And if there's three houses that are zoned in Darien, I'd be on the third one, on the one in the middle.
Yeah.
And I'm just hoping that you keep it as a conservation thing. I don't think it would be, because I don't know where would the driveway be?
Yeah.
In front of my house?
So, Jeremy, good question.
We think you've been telling me your name. C-O-L-A-B-E-L-L-A. Thank you.
So, you're adjacent to 55 Post Road?
Right. That's where my mailbox is on that side.
So, Jeremy, the conservation easement is in place for how long?
Forever. Unless they change.
Yeah, I remember.
And again.
It's farming.
So.
The conservation easement in the assessor's record says that conservation easement is point three six acres, 14,000 square feet.
And just.
Step back, triangle.
And basically, nothing can be done in that conservation easement, right?
Right. No development, no parking, no building.
Because in the winter time, I see the price line building.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
In the summertime, it's covered, you know?
I get it. I'm over on Birch Road and on Point of Woods. You can see right through the woods. There will be, as Jeremy stated, even if we change the zone, you can't do anything with it.
It's such a frigging property.
Is, I mean, I hope you understand that even if we kind of move that line to the back line, that nothing can be done because of conservation easement.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to know even if you were going to do 30, 40 feet of buffer and then do it on the other side of that, you know?
No.
The only buffers, you can use that land area for development along the post road in terms of lot coverage and, and other bulk regulations.
We're pretty good. Okay, great.
Thanks for your comments. Appreciate it. Well, concern, that's our determination, right? But I'm, I'll put a check mark that it's, in my mind, something I would consider. Anybody else? Wow. Blast from the past.
You're getting.
This is our Tivitts.
You're getting tag teamed by Tivitts Brothers.
Oh, no.
So, my, I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen, Al Tivitts, my brother John, T-I-V-T-T-S. Well, my brother mentioned to me today that what did I think about this zone change? It was as it affected his property, which is, you got it listed as 1910 Post Road. It's the Christian Science Reading Room. And the first two words that popped in my mouth, my mind, not my mouth, were buffer zone. And this zone change will have, I think, a pretty negative effect on the zoning layout of this property that my brother owns.
I'm sorry. To which?
He owns the Christian Science Reading Room, which is immediately adjacent to Six Rings End, but it's on the post road, the corner of Ring's End.
Oh, so you think changing Six Rings End to residential is not.
It will create a 25-foot rear yard setback that did not exist without this zone change. Jeremy, you want to talk to me about that? Because the NB says that where an NB property adjoins a residential zone, the rear yard of that property will be the rear yard of residential zone. And in the half acre zone, the rear yard is 25 feet.
Got it.
So.
Oh, so suddenly your property will require a back.
A 25-foot back.
Right.
But it doesn't exist.
It doesn't have.
Right now, they have, John has a.
Right across the middle of that building.
That property has a current setbacks for the neighborhood business zone. Would that be a side yard or a rear yard for these corner lots? That would be a side.
On the corner lot, it says, it says rear.
You're on a corner.
Man, this is, this is really getting good.
But this is.
It's a corner lot.
Oh, it's awesome. Exactly.
Yeah, he's a corner lot.
So, he would be a side, that would be a side yard.
Okay.
So, a side yard setback right now, forgetting what's proposed, let's talk about, side yard now is none except side yard, if a side yard is provided, it must be at least four feet.
Right.
Where side yard abuts residential zone, it shall equal the side yard requirement of said abutting residential zone. So, by changing it to R one-half.
Yep.
We would then be putting it into a side yard setback of.
You put a specific zone.
15 feet.
Okay. So, as long as our, well, 15 feet is still 15 feet that ain't there. And depending on the determination of which is the rear yard of this property.
Do you guys want to kind of discuss this while it's still open and then come back to us?
Yeah, as long as you're not closing it.
Yeah, no, 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 no.
It's fine.
I hope you're getting paid well, by the way.
I know. My brother says he can give me all of his unused paddle vests. I'm tired of my wearing these. He likes that.
All right. So, yeah, we're not going to close it. Would you, yeah, would you kind of, guys, because this, that's a, that's a unique kind of piece of property there.
If there are any good space between the two buildings.
About this much.
About this much.
And then the other thing, if you want to let me sort of pontificate.
Yeah.
I don't think that there's any practical benefit, sorry, to converting Six Rings End to residential because it's such a, it's 17, it's a 1,700 square foot lot.
Yeah.
And I don't know what advantage or disadvantage being in NB versus residential has.
We discussed in, and just for, you know, top of mind, like for consistency, you're starting to go down the road. So, you want to give him the mic, sorry. I love this pontification on both sides.
I think, I think the analysis that we had done was the use versus the district, but hadn't gone to the second step just to think about that impact on the adjacent property because in this particular situation, we're going to are very close to parking lot. So, creating a nonconformity out of this type of situation, I'm not sure that in overall balance, when we have a nonconformity, the residence use in the business district, but that's not necessarily a significant one.
Yeah.
So, this, this is a ponder situation. I think Jeremy and I can talk this through and.
With the Tivitts brothers as well. Perfect. Yes.
Thank you.
That's great. Thank you.
You don't want me to say anything. Never let me try to make it out there. He's always telling me to shut up. Go, go back.
That's awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is what I love, input. Smarter input than us sometimes. Let's see. So, anybody else like to speak? Doesn't, no? Okay. I think we're, so I need a motion to continue?
A motion to continue. Second.
Again, April 9th, 2019, room 119 of Town Hall at 8:00 PM.
Okay. And those will be the two first agenda items, hopefully. And.
Jim, you're out that night, April 9th?
Which date?
April 9th.
No.
You're, you're.
I get back to Wednesday night, which is.
Is it Darien Saturday or is it?
Are there any other ones or any?
April, Wednesday night, I get back the 10th.
Okay. So Jim's going to be out tonight? Jennifer will be out tonight? Anyone else?
Uh, okay, let's watch that date pretty closely, I guess.
Yeah, I have to be in DC.
Okay. I think I'm okay. Uh, all right. Well, we'll have to check with Kevin, I guess. He hasn't mentioned it yet, okay?
He told me the dates he's out. That was not listed, but.
Okay, well, okay, so we'll watch that really closely.
So it's April 9th we're talking?
April 9th.
All right. So since this is a special meeting, no other business can be considered. So can you just, though, tell us our next meeting, Jeremy?
Our next meeting is next Tuesday, March 29th at 8:00 PM. It's a fairly short agenda with potentially two or three public hearings and not too many general meeting items. It will be, likely to be a short meeting.
Perfect, but we do want to get that in. All right, so can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Favor.
Thank you.